I told to hurry up. All right. Good evening. Welcome to the Gurnee Village Board Regular Meeting of September 26, 2016. Roll call, please, Andy.
Ballmas.
Present.
Hood.
Here.
Wilson.
Here.
Ross.
Here.
Garner. Thorstensen.
Here.
Five I.
All right. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, I'll talk fast. Before we get to public comment, I would like to say a huge thank you from the bottom of my heart to staff, Pat, Jack, and Ellen, and Sandra, and Tom, and the chiefs, everybody, Brian, who worked on Beer Fest. It was hugely successful, lot of fun, tons of positive feedback. We will be doing awards when we have the official number, but our attendance was about 1,600, and we anticipate netting about 25,000, pretty significant. We'll get that divvied up and get our sponsors here and the recipients of those charitable donations, but that was a huge effort. Thank Kylie, there's Carrie, there's so many people involved. You guys really shined.
Yeah, it was definitely a team effort, for sure. I mean, all the departments pitched in, some employees on Saturday came out early before we got started and volunteered their own time. Ellen definitely took the lead on it and spent more hours than I want to think about marketing the event to make it successful, so, I mean, huge thanks to Ellen. Without all her hard work and dedication, it wouldn't have been half as successful as it was, but definitely a team effort, for sure.
Well, and you put in a lot of hours, too, more than I want to think about, too, but, again, the community loved it. It's one of the things our residents have been asking for is community events.
Just being there, and that's just great.
So, well done. Also, Chief Frito, please let your team know, great job on a very sad incident out at the Tri-State last week, horrific, but I know our quick response, their quick thinking, their training really helped the people that were involved, so please extend my thanks for their good work that day. All right. Are you girls gonna make any comment, a public comment, because you're only public here? No? Okay. All right, since we want to get done early, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented? Motion by trustee Ballmas, second by trustee Wilson? Roll call, please, Andy.
Ballmas.
Aye.
Hood.
Yes.
Wilson.
Aye.
Ross.
Aye.
Thorstensen.
Yes.
Five I.
All right, motion carries. Patrick, please read the consent agenda into the record.
Item number one, approval of the minutes from the September 12, 2016 Village Board meeting. Item number two, approval request for communications supervisor Phil Burnell, shift leader Wendy Mann, records supervisor John Peterson, and records assistant Becky Stutz to attend the PSSI User Group Conference in Annapolis, Maryland from November 15 through 17, 2016 at an estimated cost of $4,305. Item number three, approval request for police officers Marty DePurdy and Kirk Helgason to attend Smith &amp; Wesson's M&amp;P Armors Certification Course in Wanakee, Wisconsin on October 19, 2016 at an estimated cost of $731. Item number four, approval payroll for period ending September 17, 2016 in the amount of Item number five, approval payroll transfer journal for period ending September 17, 2016 in the amount of $756,837.54. Item number six, approval bills for period ending September 26, 2016 in the amount of
Thank you, Patrick. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as read to the record? Motion by trustee Ballmas, second by trustee Ross. Roll call, please, Andy.
Ballmas.
Aye.
Hood.
Yes.
Wilson.
Aye.
Ross.
Aye.
Thorstensen.
Yes.
Five I.
All right, we'll move on to petitions and communications, and tonight, we get to meet our new 2016 queens. If you guys would come down front, I'm gonna introduce you. Busy already. All right, our Miss Gurnee is Leah. Why don't you go ahead and just school, class, some of your extracurricular activities?
Hi, I'm Leah Davis. I am a senior at Warren Township High School. I play lacrosse for the high school and will be attending Tiffin University in Ohio to play lacrosse and study science.
Thank you. Junior Miss Gurnee, who also was a little Miss Gurnee at one time, but Emily Hetman.
Hi, I'm Emily. I'm a 7th grader at Prairie Crossing Charter School. We're learning a lot of fun stuff right now. We've been going outside a lot, and we're waiting just to have more fun. Yeah, and I also tap dance at Step's Performing Arts Center in Lindenhurst.
Our littlest Miss Gurnee, Morgan.
Hi, I'm Morgan. I'm in 4th grade at Woodland Intermediate, and I do cheer, and I'm very happy because I get to miss an hour of cheer tonight.
Well, the girls, as you know, work very, very hard. They attend a lot of events, ribbon cuttings, they act as volunteers at almost all of our community events in different ways, so they're gonna have a really great year, and you're gonna represent us beautifully. I have little tokens. When you get your pictures printed, you can save these, and you don't have to worry about them being destroyed digitally. I have one for Leah, Emily, and one for Morgan, okay? Have you ever seen a photo album before? Or this, okay. Lots of them. But it's a token of our appreciation for representing the village here for the next year, and I look forward to seeing what pictures you guys put in them. And you have for us?
We just wanted to appreciate, or show our appreciation to the hall and to the Village Board for accepting us into the community and letting us be your representatives in many events that we will be going through in the future.
Gorgeous picture. We will get that hung up tomorrow, so everybody who comes will know who's representing us this year. This is great. All right, are we at the ribbon cutting Thursday, Wednesday morning? It's school time, so, all right. All right, I'm sure we're gonna be at something together soon. Thank you, girls, very much for coming. You guys want the boxes? Get your homework done. All right, we have, next up is approval of a proclamation designating October 16, October 2016, as Let's Talk Month. Studies show that good communication between parent and child is essential to development of children and provides them with the strengths they need to make positive choices, and it is widely known that if a parent opens lines of communication about day-to-day events, the child will more likely seek input on more serious issues as well, and children will share more if they think their opinions matter, and hectic family schedules sometimes minimize opportunities for family discussions, and a primary goal for the Healthy Communities Healthy Youth Organization is to help communities develop and implement coordinated, long-term efforts to promote the healthy development of all children and adolescents, and Healthy Communities Healthy Youth has spearheaded this initiative to heighten the awareness of the value of good parent-child communication and increase its frequency, and the Village of Gurnee supports the Healthy Communities Healthy Youth Organization and the development of assets that will help young people grow up healthy, caring, and responsible. Now therefore, I, Christina Kavark, Mayor of Gurnee, do hereby proclaim October 2016 as Let's Talk Month. This month, I encourage families to open the lines of communication with their children. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion by trustee Wilson, second by trustee Thorstensen. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Chief Woodside represents us with the organization. You're round. Thank you, chief. Next up, Crime Prevention Month is October 2016. The vitality of the Village of Gurnee depends on how safe we keep our homes, neighborhoods, schools, workplaces, and communities, and crime and fear of crime destroy our trust in others and in civic institutions, threatening the community's health, prosperity, and quality of life, and people of all ages must be made aware of what they can do to protect themselves and their families, neighbors, and coworkers from being harmed by crime, and crime prevention initiatives must include self-protection and security, but they must go beyond these to promote collaborative efforts to make neighborhoods safer for all ages and to develop positive opportunities for young people, and adults must invest time, resources, and policy support in effective prevention and intervention strategies for youth, and effective crime prevention programs succeed because of partnerships with law enforcement, other government agencies, civic groups, schools, faith communities, businesses, and individuals as they help to nurture communal responsibility and instill pride. Now therefore, I, Christina Kavark, Mayor of the Village of Gurnee, do hereby proclaim October 2016 as Crime Prevention Month throughout the Village and urge all citizens, government agencies, public and private institutions, and businesses to invest in the power of prevention and work together to make the Village of Gurnee a safer, stronger, more caring community. Do I have a motion to approve?
Second.
Motion by trustee Ballmas, second by trustee Ross. All in favor, say aye.
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 All right, and I'm sure we have a series of public awareness tweets and posts and neighborhood watch meetings and everything else to support that. All right. Next up, our incredible Finance Director, Brian, is gonna walk us through the first quarter financial performance. Pat, anything you want to add to that?
No, we'll let Brian take over here, and then I'll have a little snippet information at the end that he may or may not share.
How incredible are you?
I think he's very incredible.
Did you find a lot of money that we can just spend?
Well, I'll do my best to get through this. I know there's preseason hockey on tonight, everybody wants to get home and watch, so we'll be up. Finally. All right, thank you, Mayor. Included in the packet is the first quarter report. This reports information through July 31st. Before we get into the numbers, typically just go over where we're at for fiscal year 16. The final reporting mechanism is the audit, which will be presented October 17 to the Board. This is the first quarterly report for fiscal year 17, and long-term plans are just starting to be updated for fiscal year 18, so we start that process. Looking at cash and investments, total cash investment's just over 31.2 million. General Fund makes about 70% of that, water and sewer 15 in the Capital Fund III. Mix of cash is about 40% in money markets, primarily Illinois funds, 30% checking with First Midwest, and then about 30, a little over 30% in short-term fixed income investments. The Village's portfolio versus the 91-day T-bow, which is the benchmark the Village uses, the Village portfolio's earning about 71 basis points, and the 91 T-bow's at 31, so outperforming our benchmark. Looking at major revenues in the General Fund, just recap these account for about 75% of all General Fund revenues. Finished the quarter with a positive variance of about 1.48%, or about $102,000, but I think more importantly, at least for this slide, is where we're at versus last year. Versus last year, we're down 0.62%, or about $43,000. So this is a trend that we saw during the third and fourth quarter reports. Last year, essentially a flattening of sales tax. That has continued. Sales tax through the first quarter versus budget seasonally adjusted, up just 0.43%, or about $17,000. Versus last year, we're down about $10,000, so I would call that extremely flat, based on, you know, 17 million, so. One of the other variances we're seeing is income tax. Income taxes are down, the Village's budgets, income tax, based on the IML estimate, they, at least with their last report, are confident this will finish the year within their estimate, so we do see this bounce back a little bit in the second quarter, but something we definitely need to keep an eye on. Use tax continues to outperform as online retailers start to voluntarily start collecting sales tax and continue that theme, so we'll see the positive variances there. Telecom tax is a bright spot because it's not down as much as we had anticipated. This is a revenue stream that's been going down about 5%, 6% a year for the last four or five years, and we're only seeing about a 2% drop this year so far. Amusement tax, strong performance, up about 17.68% over budget and about 6.65% ahead of last year. Food and beverage, again, strong performance here, 10%, positive against budget, and almost 6% against last year, so amusement and food and beverage, very positive there. Hotel tax is down about 6.84% against budget, about 5% against last year, so it's something we'll take a look at. That did bounce back a little bit in August, so we'll see that when we get to the second quarter. And then building permits, very strong performance here as we get some projects underway, the medical office on Rowlands, Sam's Gas Station, floor and decor, Marcus Cinemas are some of the bigger receipts we saw there this quarter, so. Overall, keep an eye on sales tax is kind of the theme here, so. In the General Fund, total General Fund revenues are at about 24.47% of budget. Outside of the items we just talked about, taxes are at 23.45. That's just a recording error that corrects itself in the second quarter, so you'll see that corrected with the second quarter report. Licensing and permits is a timing issue, those processes happen later in the year. The first quarter report, a lot of it is timing at this point. On the expenditure side, we're at 24.42% of budget, again, here mostly timing. We had a three payroll month in the first quarter, and then the premium for insurance comes out, so property liability, work comp insurance. Other than that, everything seems to be pretty much on track. Water and sewer fund, a lot of the same variances here, seasonality in water and sewer charges, bump charges for service over 25% at 25.79. Total revenues at 26.15% of budget. Couple items here on the expenditure side, the payroll and the insurance, as I mentioned in the General Fund, but also training and some seasonal hydrant maintenance throws the employee benefits and repairs and maintenance categories over, so. Police and fire pension funds, average police pension side, average portfolio balance about $40 million. So far, first quarter, gains in income about $140,000. Annualized that, it's about 8.51%, which is ahead of the benchmark of 7, however, if you look at the last 12 months, they're down 0.6%. On the fire side, average portfolio of almost 30, 1.15 million through the first quarter, gives you an annualized return of about 15.63%, and on a 12-month rolling average here, they're on a 12-month rolling lookback, about 3.88%. So, still shy of the benchmark of 7, but if you remember last August, and then again in January, we had some pretty volatile market swings, so those are still.
In your opinion, why is there such a disparity between police pension performance and fire pension performance?
Almost entirely the makeup of their equity portfolio. The fire pension fund is more in mutual fund type of equities, and the police pension is individual holdings.
So, industry does bad, the whole thing goes.
Correct. So I'd say on the fire side, they're a little more diversified in their equity holdings. On the police side, not as much, it's not a, you know, bad thing or anything like that, it's just a difference of investment strategies, but they also had.
But we end up making up the difference if the investment doesn't even meet the benchmark, so.
That is on the village, correct? But there's times when, you know, one strategy pays off more than the other, so. With pension funds particularly, you want to look pretty long-term on those things, so.
Okay, thank you.
Economic reports here, just broad economic indicators, I'll run through these real quick. I combined the beige book and the economic indicators here just to give an idea of trends here. Consumer retail side, which we've seen locally, is they both noted a slowdown in retail spending and consumer spending. Business and manufacturing's up, but not on inventories, more on IT and equipment. Construction and real estate was kind of neutral in both reports. They did note, the beige book noted some strength in single-family, sales, manufacturing, autos and aerospace industries are doing well, banking and finance. Beige book noted increases in loans to small and mid-sized businesses, which is a good indicator. Prices and costs were neutral, and then record harvest is putting pressure on pricing for the agriculture industry, so. With that, I'm happy to take any questions.
Any questions, trustees? You can send your questions to Brian, too, if it's a little more involved. I've got some follow-up questions on pension I'll get with you during the week. Thank you.
Okay, and then just one more snippet information, so we did receive word last week that we've received the GFY's Distinguished Budget Presentation Award again, so that's, they judge a budget on four separate areas, communication, policy, I don't know what the other two are, I can't remember, but then there's criteria underneath that.
The logo.
The logo. So that's something we apply for every year, and obviously Brian takes the lead on the budget, Jack spends a lot of time working on it, I spend a lot of time working on it, Scott with the capital plan, and then obviously the departments getting us the information, so that's a good piece of news, so.
Excellent, congratulations.
Yes, congratulations.
All right, thank you.
All right, any other reports?
No.
No old business?
Correct.
All right, new business. Let's get this behind us. Approval of recommendation to set trick-or-treat hours for Halloween 2016 for Sunday, Sunday, October 30, 2:00 p.m. to 5:00 p.m.
Motion approved.
I take responsibility for this. I know we all voted, but in our exuberance, and we'd had many years of complaints about Sunday, we did really not think about the impact on families who planned much better than any of us, well in advance, so I do have, I know I got emails, and I got phone calls, and I have, I pasted in comments that didn't come through my mayor email, but came through the other ones, so we'll have those in the public record. Overall, we had great support for Saturday, great idea, don't do it this year, especially when we started hurting some community organizations, so I met with all three schools, I met with the Park District, I even met with the young ladies. Everybody agrees, waiting till next year is in the best interest of the community, so please, let's put trick-or-treat back this year on Sunday. And Patrick and I talked about it, and for the life of us, we couldn't even fathom why we waited till September each year anyways to do this, so Patrick's idea was when we do our annual schedule of all the meetings for the whole year, as long as the chief concurs and gives us an affirmative recommendation, we are going to adopt Halloween trick-or-treating hours when we adopt our meeting schedule for the year. Anybody plans more than 10 or 11 months in advance, they need to call, like, on my house or my schedule or something. So, Andy, these are for you, I didn't get a chance to give them to you, but any other com, are you giving them to them so you can paste them into the record? Any other comments? I don't know why we didn't think of that that night.
If you'd have done it on Halloween, there wouldn't have been any issue.
You'll read a lot of that in the comments, too, and I did refer them to Chief Woodside. I threw, eventually I just said, I'm throwing him under the bus.
Motion to approve.
Thank you. Trustee Wilson.
Second.
Second trustee Thorstensen. Should I do a roll call? Roll call.
Ballmas.
No.
Hood. Yes.
Wilson.
Aye.
Ross.
Aye.
Thorstensen.
Yes.
And I'm an a, too. I feel bad. All right, so the world is right again. Thank you. Motion carries. Item number two, approval of awarding the Milwaukee Avenue Sidewalk Project to the low bidder Schroder &amp; Schroder, Inc. at a cost not to exceed $249,405.
We're gonna get this one done eventually, so at the last meeting, we approved transferring some money around in the capital improvement fund, now that the major reconstruction and street resurfacing programs are coming to wrapping up, and we know there's some excess funding left, so what we're proposing to do is to get this done in one fell swoop. We originally bid this a couple months ago. Schroder &amp; Schroder was a low bidder at $249,405. We had 175 in the budget. At that time, we weren't sure where these roadway programs were gonna wrap up, now that we've got a better feel, we transferred money to be able to get this project done. As you know, it was a major theme throughout the strategic planning process, and then also the follow-up walkability pedestrian mobility survey that we did. Work with Schroder &amp; Schroder in the past, solid company, so we're anxious to get this going forward, or we're hoping to get a start on it here shortly. It's just gonna be weather dependent when we go into November and December, how much we get done, but obviously want to get this done before Six Flags opens next year, so.
It's turned out to be way more complicated than it seemed at first. Any questions for Pat or David? Motion to approve. Motion by trustee Ross.
Second.
Second by trustee Thorstensen. Roll call, please, Andy.
Ballmas.
Aye.
Hood.
Yes.
Wilson.
Aye.
Ross.
Aye.
Thorstensen.
Yes.
Five I.
All right, motion carries. Item number three, another giant leap for us, approval of authorizing the development and intergovernmental agreement between the City of Zion and the Village of Gurnee for emergency telephone system board consolidation and dispatching services.
Sure, so we brought you guys in for the one-on-one meetings here over the past couple weeks to get you up to speed on where this is at. The state's requiring consolidation of ETSBs that serve a population of under 25,000, we're above that, but there are communities, other communities of Lake County that are below that, Zion is one, so they're looking for some options as far as what to do with their dispatching and ETSB. We've been in discussions with them, they like the level of service we can provide, the technology we have, et cetera, so last Tuesday night, the Zion City Council voted to move forward with negotiating an intergovernmental agreement with us, so this is just the formal approval on our side. If this is approved, we've got a couple draft agreements that we'll work off of, we're gonna draft the agreement, and then we'll present it to Zion, to their staff up there, and then negotiate that out, and then bring it back before both their city council and the Village Board for approval. Looking to have that done around December timeframe, so that'll be back in front of you. A lot of work has gone into this to date, and there's much more work to go into this before the people dialing 911 in Zion are being answered here in Gurnee, but it's been positive on both sides to date. We don't expect anything different going forward, but like I said, this just gives us a formal approval to start working on that agreement, and then we'll be back before you in a couple months.
Well, this is a big step for us, but important one. I remember we were all at that meeting at the Holiday Inn in 2014, and we was talking about the consolidation, and staff took the initiative and figured out we had capacity, we could do this, we had the processes, and Chris, and John, and Sandra, and Willie, and Kevin, and Fred, and Chris, and Brian, everybody, Brian, I mean, there was a lot of people involved in this. It's an excellent plan, it'll do us well, we definitely want to make sure that we're the ones taking in business as we have capacity, and with no loss in service to our own residents, but this is a good opportunity for us, and a big step. Questions?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by trustee Ballmas, second by trustee Ross. Discussion, trustee Thorstensen.
I'll email Brian.
Okay. All right, I have a motion and a second. Roll call, please, Andy.
Ballmas.
Aye.
Hood.
Yes.
Wilson.
Aye.
Ross.
Aye.
Thorstensen.
Yes.
Five I.
All right, big win. Next up, item number four, approval of ordinance 2016.
67.
67, approving a final plat for the Vista Ridge subdivision being in unincorporated Lake County.
Yeah, so you had a memo from David Ziegler, Community Development Director, on this. Per state statute, we've got zoning and subdivision oversight within 1.5 miles of our corporate limits. Recently received request to sign a subdivision plat for this development here, Vista Ridge, which is on the west side of Hunt Club between Gurnee Glen and Hunt Club Meadows, so basically the west side of Hunt Club, right across from South Ridge, looking at 65 single-family residential lots, which is just under two lots per acre in density. We've taken a look at it, it conforms all of our requirements, they've also negotiated and have signed off on impact fee agreements between the developer and the library, the school, and the school districts, the elementary and high school district, so those have been finalized as well, so those taxing bodies are aware of it and have agreed, signed off on the impact fees.
And there's no new curb cut, right?
No, not along Hunt Club.
Questions, trustee Ballmas?
Do they get sewer and water then from us, too? Do they link up through us, or is?
They're served by Lake County Public Works Water Act.
The answer is no.
Doesn't cut through us, though, huh?
We, yeah, it's outside of the Village of Gurnee, so it's a dining area for sewer, so we. so we...
No, it was planned to be taken into the county's sewer and water program.
They'll be in a fire district. Okay. Do I need a motion? Okay. Okay, motion?
Second.
Who made the motion?
I did.
Oh, trustee Ballmas, second by trustee Thorstensen. Roll call, please. Andy?
Ballmas.
Aye.
Hood.
Yes.
Wilson.
Aye.
Ross.
Aye.
Thorstensen.
Yes.
Bye-bye.
All right, motion carries. Ended the meeting. I did it. You guys will get home in time for the debate. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
No motion.
Motion by trustee Ballmas, second by trustee Thorstensen. Wilson, they all said it. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Go watch it.